This conference will now be recorded.
You have it muted? You have it muted? I started recording and it didn't come across. It didn't say anything.
Yeah.
It didn't come through here, though.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Part two. That was the perfect answer. But it was pretty close, these guys. Not an exciting one. Oh, be careful because I have a really well I'm going to turn it off. I can't see it.
This conference will now be recorded.
So, to me...
They were talking about it in the beginning of their case.
To me, that's like a mistake, but I guess it could be just...
How you doing there?
So, they're saying why? Okay. So, this is a typo because that, this parentheses needs to be here. And then there needs to be here.
We now call City Council to order. In the absence of our prayer person, I will be doing that tonight. So, if we can all stand for prayers, I appreciate it. Bob, we thank you for this gathering up tonight. We ask for your guidance and your leadership to show us the way of which we should go. We ask protection over our fire department, over our police, and over our EMT. We ask that you be with us as we read tonight, in God's name, amen. Roll call?
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross? Foster?
Here.
Bliss?
Here.
The next on our agenda is a public hearing for a proposed tax rate. We'll ask our city administrators to give a little bit of information about what that is in regards to...
Uh, oh, thank you. Every year, we are required, uh, by law or by state statute to go through a, uh, a calculation of the Hancock Amendment that was, uh, developed that basically says that cities cannot benefit, or sorry, cities and other tax jurisdictions cannot benefit by simply increasing asset valuation of property and getting more tax rate. So, there's a process that's required by that Hancock Amendment that goes that, uh, the counties have to provide the assessed valuations. Those assessed valuations are entered into a form that, uh, that the state auditor manages that form and puts all of those calculations into that spreadsheet. The county clerk has to enter all of the assessed valuations into that. Then basically those assessed valuations split out what the maximum amount of levy can be. If the assessed valuations go up more than, than inflation does, then the levy has to go down to keep the rate, uh, the amount of tax that we pull in, uh, consistent with the Hancock Amendment. If the assessed valuations don't go up or go down, then the levy actually can go up, uh, subject to the amount that the voters have authorized to keep again the tax equal to, uh, to what we should be receiving. So, that process all has to be done, and then we have to hold this public hearing. And this public hearing is for anybody that wants to come forward and talk about the improvements of that levy. And, uh, and then council then can take that information into consideration. And then, uh, later on in the agenda, they will be considering an ordinance that sets the levy for the next, next year or the, uh, next tax year. And, uh, all of that has to be done and set in front of the, or sent to the state auditor prior to September 1 so that those amounts can be certified by the state auditor. And then the county can then send that out on the, on the... So, I'd be certainly happy to entertain any questions or do that pretty quick. Uh, but would you have to entertain any questions? Or if others want, I would suggest you open a public hearing to hear from anyone that wants to speak?
Hearing nine, we now open this hearing for a public emphasis. Please state your name and address as you come to the podium if you have something that you wish to say. Seeing that there's no one coming forward, we're going to close this public hearing. Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to our special awards for tonight. The first one being the Hero Fund USA check presentation. And we have a Hero Fund representative, Mr. Daryl Smith, CEO, here tonight. Chief, you want to come up and...
Members of the council, thank you for, um, having us here this evening. Um, you know, with tightening budgets and everything and the safety of firefighters with active killer events, um, body armor and protective helmets were a key of our strategic plan, um, this past year. Um, you know, with tightening budgets and looming things that are coming to the city, uh, we reached out to Hero Fund USA for a grant that paid 50% of our, um, perfect vests and helmets. Um, I would like to, uh, call up Mr. Daryl Smith, CEO of Hero Fund USA for a check presentation, um, and a few words from him.
Thank you, chief. As you mentioned, my name's Daryl Smith. I'm the chief executive officer and co-founder of Hero Fund USA. There's a good chance you've never heard of our organization. We're a small nonprofit based in Blue Springs, Missouri, with a singular focus mission. Our mission is to stand in the gap between what a first responder department or agency's budget is in any given fiscal year and what the need for incremental safety equipment, an increased envelope, if you will, of protection for the first responders themselves so that he or she get to go home to their loved ones after their shift is over and so that, uh, we provide funding to the first responders so they can go home. And so, uh, Chief Owen approached us, uh, earlier this year about funding for something we thought we would never need to do, and that is ballistic vests and helmets for firefighters. I wish we didn't live in that world, but we do today. And so, we are blessed by God to be able to present a check tonight to the city of Sedalia and their fire department for $7,867.50 toward the cost of 15 new ballistic vests and helmets, ballistic helmets for the, uh, Sedalia Fire Department. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you so very much from the Hero Fund. Our next item on the agenda, Chief, don't go off screen.
I didn't, I didn't. Um, so as you were at last council meeting, we did promotions for lieutenant. Um, Driver Engineer Pepin was unable to attend that meeting, so we still feel calling him Driver Engineer, and he is now two weeks behind everybody else in seniority. If I could have Driver Engineer Pepin come to the front, please. Driver Engineer Pepin did very well in his lieutenant promotional testing. Um, he is one of the six that have been promoted to lieutenant. Um, this evening, we will be pinning his lieutenant badge on him. Uh, Sierra, his stepdaughter? Come on up. She will be doing the spinning. Congratulations, Lieutenant Jeremy Pepin. With the, with the six promotions to lieutenant, um, it opened up two drivers' positions for promotions. So, this evening, if I could have Matt Kowalski and Gus Duff. Taylor Gussman to the front, please. Firefighter Kowalski is a second-generation firefighter. I just want you to know that. Um, his grandfather was a driver engineer for the Sedalia Fire Department. Gentlemen, gentlemen, back here, back here. Come on now. Uh, and Taylor Gussman came to us, um, um, like a work, Radwitz. Uh, came to us a couple of years back. Um, he's been a very valuable asset to this fire department. Um, both of these gentlemen tested highest in their driver operator's, um, testing procedure. Uh, so tonight, we will be pinning their badges. Uh, Mr. Kowalski will be being pinned by Kennedy and the girl, ladies. And Mr. Gussman will be being pinned by his father, who is also a driver engineer, Aaron. Where's he at? Oh, there he is. Congratulations, Engineers Matt Kowalski and Taylor Gussman.
Thank you, chief, and congratulations to our fire department. We're now down to the approval of our previous special minutes. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we'll have the reports of special boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion to approve and block?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Roll call of standing committee. We go to our finance and administration. And tonight, Vice Chair Thomas Oldham will be holding that discussion.
We only have a few items tonight. The first item, uh, we need to make a decision of whether we would like to move or cancel the next council meeting. This is due to your city council attending their annual Missouri municipal league conference. While we're there, the next council meeting will be scheduled for that night. So, the council, we just need to decide if we want to move that council meeting to another day, or do we want to cancel that meeting altogether?
I'll, I'll move the week.
The, the meeting after next. Not next week, yes, September 16th.
The one that coincides with MML.
The one, yeah.
I'll move it, we move it to a different day.
We can move it to the following Monday. That still gives us a week, uh, between that next council meeting.
I'll, I'll include that the following Monday.
So, that would be September the 23rd?
That is correct, ma'am.
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
I, I do have a question. Kelvin, is it necessary that we move the meeting? Or is it okay if we cancel and, or do we, do we have anything pressing that we need to do?
Yeah, that's up to you all. My recommendation was us to just cancel it as a regular meeting. And then if something comes up, at this point, we don't have anything that would require us to have meetings. But if something comes up, you can always schedule any, any special meeting.
You got a motion and a second on the floor, so you need to look that down if you want to.
Or you can withdraw your motion in there, right, council?
I'm not going to. I'd rather see, I mean, I'd rather me. I mean, I think we, twice a month isn't that big a deal.
And the, for the 23rd, Monday, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the 7th? And Chair, you can take a vote.
Now, so we have two different things asking. We're going to do a roll call on that?
You don't have to.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Give me one second. Okay, that's, so we would be, you're wanting to move to the 20th, Monday?
23, yeah. Just go ahead and have a meeting, but not the week of MML. It just ends up if we don't, my thought is if we don't have a meeting, we're just going to have a bigger meeting next time.
And that October really does start the budget, that's the first. So, those are going to be longer meetings.
I'm sorry, I should have said that before.
Okay, I'm just looking, scheduling to see how that works.
I think you've only got two votes.
I, I, I'll be in favor also.
Me too.
Okay, so, so, council, can I do another all in favor so I can get this number counted?
To confirm the vote, you can ask the 9th.
Okay, to confirm it. All rounds have said aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. Be on the 23rd of September for our next meeting.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next item is a presentation from our finance director, Jessica Paul.
Okay, we are looking at June sales for sales and use tax. And this does include marijuana sales tax. It is up fiscal year-to-date of over $500,000. That is 6.6% over where we were at the same time last year. And we did budget a 4% increase, so that is a positive budget variance of over $200,000 fiscal year-to-date. Um, $100,000 of that $200,000 is related to the marijuana sales tax. Um, that additional 3% sales tax went into effective cash registers on October of 2023, so we don't have any activity to compare this time last year. So, we are up in marijuana sales tax of over $100,000 when compared to last year at the same time. Um, franchise tax is down significantly. Um, the greatest proportion of that is for the charter settlement on a streaming video class action lawsuit that we received funds last fiscal year in April 2023. That was around $377,000. And so, the remaining $100,000 difference is due to a decrease in gas tax. Gas tax is down 45% fiscal year-to-date. Transportation taxes, um, is higher fiscal year-to-date for two reasons. The first is the gasoline tax. That's up 9% fiscal year-to-date. And then also vehicle sales is up 5.2% fiscal year-to-date. And the vehicle fees, which also is included in that taxes flat. And then property taxes collected, we are a little bit higher fiscal year-to-date, but the majority of those come in December and January. Any questions?
Council, any questions or any discussion?
Thank you, Jessica. Next item we have tonight, first from the public hearing we had just a moment ago, the lead-in ordinance adopting the tax rate, the levy.
Call for the reading of that ordinance?
Bill number 2024-156. An ordinance levying and providing for the collection of taxes for the year 2024 in the cities today in Missouri.
Second, reading?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just have one quick question. Kelvin, I just want to reiterate, this is not any increase in our taxes. Now, there's been a lot of scuttle about that, and we just want to be super clear. So, no increase in taxes. This is just a procedural thing that we do every year.
That is accurate. The, uh, the levies have to be set by ordinance every year. This is the same, same levies that have been approved by the voters to actually increase the tax without, you know, both of the people. But this is just resetting the levy in accordance with the Hancock Amendment.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The call for the second reading?
Bill number 2024-156. An ordinance levying and providing for the collection of taxes for the year 2024 in the cities today in Missouri.
Final passage?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
Thank you.
The first, uh, the last item we have tonight will consist of a resolution. And an ordinance, uh, we've had a couple of positions open up in the IT department, and we found a viable candidate, but that person is only requesting part-time. So, we need a resolution and an ordinance to amend the budget to add an additional position for part-time IT staff addition.
The call for the reading of the resolution?
Resolution 2104. A resolution in the city council of cities today in Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase cities in the budget fiscal year 2025. Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2024-157. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding IT part-time staff addition.
Second reading?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading?
Bill number 2024-157. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding IT part-time staff addition.
Final passage?
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Community development?
Tonight, I have three items, um, the first of which is a pending and leveling tax change. Uh, NPAT fines brought to Mayor Dawson's staff, a concept of the historical sign park as part of their building projects currently underway. In reviewing the plans against the current zoning codes, it is certainly questionable if our codes would allow what they want to do. However, Mayor Dawson and Administrator Shaw were in the opinion that this would be beneficial to the community. Through a liberal reading of our current code, one could argue that the historical signs included in the concepts presented would not strictly meet the definition of sign in the application of the intent of the current code. Therefore, with the mayor's approval, um, we instructed the developer to move forward while at the same time, uh, started the process to take a code change through the steps required by statute that would specifically allow historic sign parks. While making these changes, we also anticipated other areas where this issue might take other forms that we could address at the same time. Specifically, neon signs and other one-offs of historic signs were dealt within the language of the updates to the code. Planning and zoning conducted the required public hearing and after a careful review, voted to recommend approval to council. NPAT also recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Call for the reading?
Bill number 2024-158. An ordinance amending chapter 64, Article 7 of the Code of Cities Today in Missouri related to historic signs, historic sign parks, and encouraging neon signs in certain areas.
Second reading?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading?
Bill number 2024-158. An ordinance amending chapter 64, Article 7 of the Code of Cities Today in Missouri related to historic signs, historic sign parks, and encouraging neon signs in certain areas.
Final passage?
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call?
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
The second item that I have this evening is, um, amending with the grant for the West Central Sedalia survey. John Simmons applied for, and the city was awarded a grant to the state historic preservation office to complete a survey of the West Central residential area of Sedalia. The original grant agreement was adopted in December of 2022. And June of 2024, council and the granting agency approved an extension of time to complete the work to August. Due to the scope of work, the granting agency is agreeable to extending the deadline again to September 30th.
The call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2024-159. An ordinance approving an amendment to the Historic Preservation Grant Financial Assistance Agreement with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the West Central Sedalia Historic District Reconnaissance Survey.
Second reading?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading?
Bill number 2024-159. An ordinance approving an amendment to the Historic Preservation Grant Financial Assistance Agreement with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the West Central Sedalia Historic District Reconnaissance Survey.
Final passage?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Marshall is absent. Seven yes, one ask.
All right, the third item tonight I have is amending the city code as suspension and revocation of licenses and permits. The current code allows for a party that wishes to appeal the relocation of a license or permit to have a hearing in front of council. And that puts the legislative body in a position that it has to function in a judicial manner. This puts council in a difficult position as the rules when acting in a judicial capacity are much different. For example, when a hearing is requested, council should cut off all communication and then consider fairly only what is put in front of them at the hearing. This is in direct conflict with the council member communicating with and responding to the concerns of the constituents. The city already has a structure to handle these judicial roles in its Board of Appeals. To more effectively separate these distinctly different roles, legal staff recommends handling of these hearings to the Board of Appeals. This allows the individual council members to remain engaged with the constituents without having to walk the fine line between legislative and judicial roles.
Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2024-160. An ordinance of the city of today amending the city code regarding suspension and revocation of licenses and permits.
Second reading?
Second. Council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading?
Bill number 2024-160. An ordinance of the city of today amending the city code regarding suspension and revocation of licenses and permits.
Final message?
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent and Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
That's all I have, I think. Thank you. Thank you very much. How does it work? Chairman Bob Yoles?
We had four items tonight. Big improvement from last week. First on the agenda is an automobile ran into a landscaping wall on the... First on the agenda is an automobile ran into a landscaping wall on the 100 block of West Main Street. The city has received restitution for the damages and has located a vendor capable of making the repairs. Since this was not anticipated in the budget, staff recommends formally appropriating the expenditure of these funds. So, we need a resolution and an ordinance.
Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2105, a resolution of the City Council of the Cities Today in Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the cities in the budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-161, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding building and maintenance wall repair.
Second reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading.
Bill number 2024-161, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding building and maintenance wall repair.
Final passage.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
As discussed during the strategic planning and budgeting process, the plan to utilize the certificate of participation style of financing for the Aquatics Bowl Alley Fire Station Fire Training Center projects, staff has worked with Gilmore and Bell as bond attorneys for several of its past financing arrangements that are widely considered the regional experts in this area of practice. Likewise, staff has been very satisfied with their past work and knowledge base. As requested, they have provided an engagement proposal to handle this transaction, and staff recommends acceptance.
Call for the reading of an ordinance.
Bill number 2024-162, an ordinance authorizing an engagement letter for services related to the proposed delivery of certificates of participation.
Second reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading.
Bill number 2024-162, an ordinance authorizing an engagement letter for services related to the proposed delivery of certificates of participation.
Final passage.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
As denoted in the last agenda item, the city is planning to utilize tax exempt financing to fund projects. The tax exempt financing rules require the council to declare its intent to utilize this style of funding in order to make costs incurred prior to the interest refundable from the bond proceeds. Further, the resolution formally set up the team and process for going to the market with the financing arrangements. Staff recommends this approval.
Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2106, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of certificates of participation for the benefit of the Cities Today in Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, council approved an agreement for design services to extend water mains to Peterbilt and other developments. In discussion with the design engineer and developers, we determined it would be in the best interest long-term for the city to extend the main further across this property. This would allow for more development in the areas. Staff recommends approval of this, of an amendment to the scope of the work extended the north main, I'm sorry, the scope of work to extend the main further north. And this is out north, just south of 65 Fifth Ave., where Pete built, right there.
It's north.
It's on eight, off HH.
Kind of wraps around, I don't know, sixty back there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Call for the reading of the announce ordinance.
Bill number 2024-163, an ordinance approving and accepting an amended scope of work for professional surveying and civil engineering design, plans, and specifications for sanitary sewer main extension along Highway 65 and Highway HH.
Second reading.
Second. Any council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading.
Bill number 2024-163, an ordinance approving and accepting an amended scope of work for professional surveying and civil engineering design, plans, and specifications for sanitary sewer main extension along Highway 65 and Highway HH.
Final passage.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
That's all I have.
Thank you. We move now to public station. Chairman Robinson.
In November, the police department identified an opportunity to apply for a grant to offset past the cost to replace the aging patrol vehicle radio. These are, these are besides being old and no longer serviced by the manufacturer. So, we adopted the budget to authorize the application and later included the replacement project in the budget. Earlier this month, we were notified that we receive a grant covering $74,782.51 of the $149,000 expenditure. So, we recommend we accept that.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Resolution, I mean, ordinance number 2024-164, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of radios for today's police department.
Second reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading, please.
2024-164, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of radios for today's police department.
Final passage.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
Thank you. Under other businesses, we have no appointments for tonight. We have to nick this liquor license.
We have one renewal tonight. Erica Eisenminger doing business at Ivory Grill LLC at 317 South Ohio for Liquor by the Drink.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we move down to our miscellaneous items from the mayor, city council, or city administrator.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have something I'd like to propose. I would like to make motions to direct the staff to distribute the public service announcement that I have that I will read during this minute in the normal manner, plus mail all household and citizens, via our mailing service. Attention, and it reads this way, attention, citizens of Sedalia, council moves for call for action. The county commissioners owe you $548,000 as Sedalia's portion of a half-cent sales act approved by you in 2000 and extended every five years since. The language on the ballot says, quote, "This money will be for improving and maintaining for street sewer water and stormwater projects in municipalities in Pettis County." The commissioners have withheld this money because they don't want the county buildings within the city limits to meet minimum building code standards for fire and safety regulation. The commissioners think that by withholding this money, they can force your city not to enforce health and safety rules. The city will not be forced to compromise our citizens' safety. Call the commissioners and demand that they distribute this act as it was described in the ballot language in their press release. They should be reminded that many of you voted for this act, and all of you are certainly paying, yet receiving no benefit.
Do we have any discussion on Chairman Robinson's request? I need to get a motion.
Make a motion.
Just a second.
I'll second it.
Yes, Bob, second.
Bob, second.
Bob, second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye, tab it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We now are down to Good and Welfare of our program. Any items from anyone in the audience, please step forward, say your name, your address, and you'll be given three minutes to address the council. This is a time in which you are to speak to the council, but the council will not respond to this at this time. We now open Good and Welfare.
Seeing no comments, I motion to move to full court session for legal advice, real estate, and negotiating.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need a roll call.
Yeah.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Seven yes, one ask.
Thank you. Call for the next ordinance, please.
Bill number 2024-168, an ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 101 South Missouri Avenue from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Max Contra Check.
Second reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading, please.
Bill number 2024-168, an ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 318 West 16th Street from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Max Contra Check.
Final passage.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading, please.
Bill number 2024-162, an ordinance approving an engagement letter for services related to the proposed delivery of certificates of participation.
Final passage.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
Thank you. Call for our final ordinance.
Bill number 2024-169, an ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 101 South Missouri Avenue from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Max Contra Check.
Second reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading.
Bill number 2024-167, an ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 101 East 4th Street from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Natalie Victoria Elena.
Second reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading.
Bill number 2024-167, an ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 101 East 4th Street from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Natalie Victoria Elena.
Final passage.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Seven yes, one ask.
Thank you. Call for the next ordinance, please.
Bill number 2024-168, an ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 318 West 16th Street from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Max Contra Check.
Second reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Call for the second reading, please.
Bill number 2024-168, an ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 318 West 16th Street from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Max Contra